Calling this meeting to order for open session. Orville City Council meeting June 16th, 2020, where we are reconvening from closed session, where direction was given and no action was taken. Please stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
Salute, pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looking for a motion to adopt the agenda?
A motion to adopt the agenda.
I'll second that.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Pittman?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Councilmember Draper?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thompson?
Mayor Reynolds?
Yes.
And Hatley is absent, so the vote is six with one absent. It passes.
Okay, moving on to public communication. This is a time where the public has opportunity to communicate to the council. Madam Clerk, do you have anyone who is?
Mr. Mayor, I received two written correspondence, one from Tasha Levinson and one from Shannon McGovern, and they're both in front of you.
Okay, at this time, I will read.
Mr. Mayor, there is one public commenter in the lobby.
Okay, okay.
It's Mr. George Barber of Cal-Water.
Would you like him to speak first, or?
Yes, I believe he's ready to speak.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council. Just wanted to appreciate the opportunity to provide our written comments. Just wanted to be here to clarify any questions that might have popped up, but I think we solved a misunderstanding regarding the LIRA program and our request to actually increase the limits of the income for folks so more people can qualify. And also wanted to reiterate the point that we have instituted no rate increases and made that request to the PUC for the remainder of this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Legron, have you seen this correspondence from Ms. McGovern?
Yes, I have.
Is... So this is Mr. Barber explaining?
Correct. What the issue is, is that last week we did receive correspondence regarding the LIRA program with Cal-Water. After looking into it, it was determined that there was a misunderstanding from the writer of the letter, where what happened was I forgot or mistakenly thought that the letter had been removed from the agenda at the request of the writer and one of our councilperson, Councilperson Draper. I made the mistake and included that with the agenda packet. It shouldn't have went out. So it was my error. We have corrected the agenda and have corrected the agenda packet and removed the letter.
Okay, so this negates this?
Right, it's Cal-Water responding to what they thought was on the agenda.
Okay, so we have one member of the public that wishes to be heard. It's Tasha Levinson. I'll read her email. Dear Mayor, City Council Members and Staff, please note that the system that is supposed to notify the public of meetings is not functioning. I signed up for this service and find of at least four notices I should have received, only one was sent. I also am concerned that items two, three, and four on the consent agenda involve significant sums in these very unpredictable times. Under the circumstances, I believe that such matters should be fully discussed, not blanketed under the consent agenda, so that the public will understand your thinking. Better care must be taken in the agenda packet posted online. Between pages 327 and 389, more than a dozen pages are upside down. Correspondence item three, I checked with Celia Hirschman. She tried to retract this letter as she misunderstood the underlying facts when she wrote it. Finally, the city persists in being unresponsive to all of the concerns previously raised regarding districting. I worry this leaves the city vulnerable to costs and liabilities due to failure to work towards a districting plan beyond simply giving it lip service. Thank you for your attention to these matters. Tasha Levinson, Bridge Street. Okay, so do we have any other comments from the public?
I do not see anyone approaching the microphone, Mr. Mayor.
Having none, moving on to the consent calendar. We're looking for a motion to adopt the consent calendar.
I'd like to call agenda item three.
Councilmember Goodson has pulled item number three. Is there anyone who wishes to pull any other items? Having none, I'm looking for a motion to adopt the consent calendar with item number three pulled.
I make a motion that we adopt consent calendar, not including item number three. I'll second.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Pittman?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodson?
Yes.
Councilmember Draper?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Reynolds?
Yes.
The motion passes, six and one absent.
Councilmember Goodson, you pulled item number three. Do you wish to comment?
Yes, yes, I do.
Please do.
I'd like to give a little backdrop to validate my concern here and the reason why I'm going to vote the way that I'm going to vote. So Mr. Lando was appointed as our interim city administrator in March of 2018. And during that time, we, the council, had voted in Bill Legron as the assistant city administrator. Approximately one year later, in July 2019, Mayor Reynolds appointed Bill Legron as the city administrator at a salary set at $175,000 annually. Now, when Mr. Legron, after he had been appointed to the city administrator position, had requested of the council that Mr. Lando remain and continue to assist him as a consultant and, at that time, at a salary of $84,000 per year, Mr. Lando was asked to oversee the campfire crisis. And as a result of that, the city of Orville received a government award of approximately $2 million, one-time money. I think what is important to note is that all cities that were instrumental, Chico, Gridley, Biggs, they were granted campfire relief funds because they all experienced additional expenditures and hardships. With that being said, the process, it did not have to be farmed out to a consulting service. And it's my understanding that emergency services falls directly under the job description of the city administrator. For example, right now during COVID-19, Mr. Legron assumed the role of the director of emergency services and continues to do so. So fast forward, the council is now being asked today to approve Mr. Lando's consulting services once again to be used to oversee annexation projects, which is the responsibility of the city administrator. The staff report further requests Mr. Lando's consulting service to expedite building development services. And I don't know, I can't see who's in the chambers, but Leo, recently hired, the city's department head. He is the department head for planning and community development. And Leo came to us very highly recommended by Mr. Lando. Leo, he is an expert at what he does and has worked in the community development field for a multiplicity of municipalities for a number of years. And because of his expertise, the council and, well, the mayor had insisted that Leo start at the top of the pay scale, I believe approximately $175,000 annually. And so I was looking at the staff report, and it also, the third point, for the purposes of hiring Mr. Lando's consulting service, is to oversee affordable housing projects. And Amy, I don't know if she's in the chambers, but Amy Burkstrand has worked for the city for a number of years. She's an expert in her field. And not only is she a successful grant writer, but Ms. Burkstrand oversees the city's business assistance and housing development department. She is very effective and efficient in her role. And Ms. Burkstrand received a salary of $95,481.39 annually. So I don't doubt that my comments will provoke remarks to justify a continuance of Mr. Lando's consulting service contract with the city. And I just want to just ask two questions. And here's my first question. How long will the city continue to farm out the duties and the responsibilities that the taxpayers very handsomely pay the city's current staff to do and give those duties over to a consulting service specifically to Mr. Lando? And I think I'll just leave it at that with the one question. Thank you.
Does anyone wish to comment?
I'd like to make a comment if I can.
Councilmember Draper?
Well, I was a little surprised to see this item on the agenda, to tell you the truth. Not just because we're expecting at least a 30% decrease in tax revenue due to the pandemic, which will probably be much higher, but because this, to me, is an unnecessary use of taxpayers' money. Mr. Lando now wants a new contract with his salary increasing from $84,000 a year to $100,000. Meanwhile, police officers and firefighters here in Orville have to wait for up to a year after they had already been through negotiation, and they have to delay their raises and retirement contributions. And the raises are estimated to be about $107,000. So hiring Mr. Lando as a consultant for another two years, to me, is fiscally irresponsible. The tasks itemized in the packet that he'll be doing are already part of the job description for the city administrator and the head of housing development. So I'll be voting no on this contract for the same reason I voted no on his contract a year ago. We shouldn't need to hire yet another consultant for something that has historically been done in-house. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Mr. Legron, would you like to comment?
Sure, if I could, just for clarity for the council and for all those that are viewing. The contract, there is not an increase in the hourly rate. The hourly rate remains the same. The $100,000 is not a salary. It's a budget for the consultant. It's totally dependent upon how many hours Mr. Lando works over the next year as to what the total cost of that will be. The $100,000 is a budget not to exceed. The number per hour per Mr. Lando's time is the same. The business side of the city is what I can speak to. All of the other things that go on and everything, I cannot really add to that. The business side is working for the city. We are extremely busy in development. We have development impact fee studies that must be done. We have municipal service reviews that must be done in order for us to complete any sort of annexation. Mr. Lando brings a plethora of experience in this area. What Mr. Lando brings with him is not only 30 years of experience of doing it, but also has served on the LAFCO board. So in order to accomplish those things that are very complicated and complex, you know, Mr. Lando is here, his services are being utilized to oversee those things. So I do hear what the council is saying. I understand their concerns. This is not, I just want to be really clear, we're not increasing anything. It's the same thing. We're just continuing on until we get this done. The one thing that has changed in the contract is I did shorten the term in which we can give notice in the contract. It went from, I believe, a 30-day notice to a 14-day notice. So at some point when the work is complete or the council makes the decision that we're no longer going that direction and doing that work, then we can give Mr. Lando 14-day notice and his services will be discontinued after that. I hope that helps. I don't have a definite timeline as to how long Mr. Lando will be here. I'm thinking this annexation that we're talking about can take anywhere from the next 12 to 18 months.
Thank you.
I have a question.
Councilmember Smith?
Just to kind of dovetail on some of the other comments that have already been made. I don't want to play devil's advocate, for a lack of a better term. So if we didn't have Mr. Lando's services available, and again, the term budget, this is the maximum that you have discretionary use of, that particular consultant services, Mr. Lando's services. And what we're going to do if we pass this, we're going to give you that authority to utilize those services. If the council today does not give you the access to that service, what I would understand, there perhaps could be suffrage or that there may be projects that would not happen. That being said, as many cities are experiencing contraction because of the climate we're in, Orville is on a path of growth and revitalization. There's lots of things that are in the pipeline that are happening or are ready to happen very soon. And so that will require expertise and the management of that and various consulting services rendered. So if we're going to continue on a path of revitalization for our community, growth, and which is going to bring better jobs, you know, on and on, the list is just endless as to the good that can come to Orville and that is coming to Orville. So kind of beating the path here, but if you don't have that expertise available to you, what might, I mean, again, 50,000-foot here, but I mean, what kinds of things could not happen that's good coming to Orville if you did not have that available to you? In other words, if we have the, so there's an expense, but then spending money, you have to spend money to make money with the business model in mind. I know city isn't the business, and that's another argument. But we need to spend money for the city to appreciate and experience all the good things that I've just alluded to. So if you don't have that, what could be the consequences? Convince me why I should vote yes to, you know, reach out and say, you know, here's a $100,000 contract, Mr. Lando, go out, knock yourself out, and help us build an amazing city here in Orville.
Your main reasons that surround that are really simple. It's what you've asked us to do. You've asked for annexation. In order for annexation to happen, you must have a municipal service review. We don't need the municipal service review necessarily for anything else other than the annexation that you've asked for. You have to have that to take that to LAFCO to demonstrate that you can provide the services. So without having Mr. Lando here, you know, he's an integral part of that to ensure that those timelines are met, that the information is sent there. Your development impact fees, every five years, you have to do a study to determine if they are too high, too low, or just right. If you don't do that, you become subject to lawsuit and you could lose that. So a big portion of your fees could be lost if you don't have your development impact fee study done. That's what your DIF is. He's working with that, with Don Nevers. He is making sure that we are meeting those timelines and those things are coming together. He's also working with affordable housing builders. We have, the other day, I believe we had a meeting with at least six different ones in the council chambers that came. A lot of those came from the Chico area and are really seriously looking at Orville. Now, the mid-manager in housing does an excellent job for us. I can't say enough about her. I rely upon her quite a bit. But she is a mid-manager. There isn't a department head for that department at this time. She has a lot of other responsibilities that are related to housing that are not related to necessarily the formation of these projects and getting them up and running. She has reporting that she has to do through HCD and different grants that she has. She also does work on grants for us. She'll take on pretty much anything that we ask her to. She, just like a lot of people here, have reached their limit. I mean, we need somebody to pick up that slack. What my concern is, is if you don't have somebody who is on top of these things on a daily basis monitoring them, is that things will begin to fall through the cracks and that we will miss timelines and deadlines, which will be detrimental to the city's growth and the economic development of the city in the future and our ability to provide affordable housing.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Thompson, would you just speak?
First of all, I want to communicate my absolute confidence in our staff. You know, starting with you, Mr. Legron, with Leo, with Don Nevers, with Amy Burkstrom. We really do have an amazing staff here in Orville. With the addition of Mr. Lando and what he has already brought to the table, might I remind this council, those that may have forgotten that Mr. Lando was very instrumental in just recently helping to bring $2 million to our city. So if we're looking at just maintaining, just operating and functioning, we have an amazing staff. But yes, and yes, COVID, yes, there's a bunch of fear that's going out, but Orville is growing. Orville's developing. That is the reality. Now, we could sit on our hands and say, you know, bunker down and think we're going to do maintenance for a while, but I'm confident that with our staff and with Mr. Lando's help, that we'll not only see Orville continue to grow and prosper, but to see new doors open up that have never opened up for our city. As such, we've already seen, we currently see, but just judging by the fruit of Mr. Lando's participation here in our city, I see nothing but absolute amazing things from him. $2 million just being one aspect, but if that was just the one, that's pretty significant, if you ask me. And again, this $100,000 is not, is a cap, is not to exceed. And as well, there's a 14-day notice on both sides, which I'm grateful that he's even agreeable to function underneath that. So at some point, if you and your staff or whatever, or he, we decide, you know, hey, we're actually fine. We don't need this, and there's no more that we see can be brought to the table, then we could say with the two-week notice, 14 days, thank you so much for what you've done. But absolutely, already what he's brought to the table has been amazing, and I'm grateful for his service.
I'd like to comment. We, when we got involved with the city government and, you know, and it started with just paying attention of what was going on and asked to pay attention to what was going on. And so in recognizing that there was problems, big problems, obvious problems, some of us chose to get involved. And one of the things that I noticed immediately was that there was no support. There was no staff. There was no team. Well, we have been fortunate enough to be blessed with a dream team. These participants in our city government who have chosen us to bring their expertise, we have many people here with 30, 40 years' experience, that you can't buy that. And they bring not only their experience and their wisdom, but their great ideas and their great attitudes and great relationships. The relationships from the many areas that these participants have brought to Orville are invaluable. When you are here, if you are here, on a regular basis, you can see the growth. You can see the positive direction that the city has turned to and pushed forward to. And you would know which part each and every one of these team members plays. And Mr. Lando's position is an intricate part of this. Is one greater than the other? I don't think so. I think they all work well together. But if we remove an intricate part of this team... But if we remove an intricate part of this team, then I think we would see a change. Then I think that we would probably get the status quo. I know that the opinion of Orville has changed in the surrounding areas. I've been in many meetings with our legislators and developers and, and representatives of many surrounding areas. And Orville is the jewel now. Orville is the destination. Orville is the place to strive to be. People are, are leaving other areas that used to be considered the jewel of the area, and, and they're coming here, and that's because of this team. And I am, am not only proud of them, I am honored to serve with them. And I, I personally would like to thank Mr. Lando for all the, the wisdom and the dedication that he brings to this city, to this community, and his, his positive representation. When he's in surrounding areas and interacting with other people, Orville is, is his topic of positive conversation. So I really appreciate that. Thank you for helping us change the stigma of it's just Orville, or what do you expect from Orville. Well, I'll tell you with your help, Mr. Lando, and the help of this team, what they expect from Orville is top-of-the-line behavior, and thank you for being part of it.
Councilmember Pittman?
Thank you, sir. I certainly appreciate all the comments made, both positive and negative. That's what we're all here for. I have to make the mention, as being the guy with the gray hair in the room, that Orville's had a rare opportunity, and if we don't seize the opportunity, we'll probably be lost for a long, long time. And that opportunity is for just what everyone here has mentioned, new growth, new opportunities, new facets of problem, or problematic things that we just are moving ahead on. And I would also say that my time with the city, the housing agency, I remember a day when they had eight employees in that agency. I don't believe there's eight there now. There's two. So, you know, this team, as mentioned very well by the mayor, is really striking out with limited resources. The resources back in the day of the 80s and the 90s, the department heads, there was almost, I believe, 12 or 14. So right now, I think that this is a lean, mean team, and we're going to see some accomplishments coming that we've never had before. So I certainly support this concept and the use of. I will add, though, as a fellow that we used to hire a few times named Clay Castleberry, he was retired public works director for Buick County. When we hired him for consultant services, he had a 15-minute box. That's all he needed, was 15 minutes, and his box was all filled up, and he was gone. So I don't suggest that at this time, but he was quite proud of that 15-minute box, that he could take time off. So I'm done. I'm ready for a motion, if anybody else wants to speak.
Well, we need to know if there are any more comments? If there are any public comments?
I do not have any written communications. I do not know if anyone's out in the lobby area.
Having no further comments, I'm looking for a motion.
I make a motion that we adopt resolution number 8873, resolution of this Orville City Council authorizing directing the mayor to execute a professional service agreement between the city of Orville and Tom Lando.
I'll second.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Pittman?
Yes.
Councilmember Goodson?
No.
Councilmember Draper?
No.
Councilmember, or Vice Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Reynolds?
Yes.
The motion carries four yeses, two noes, and one absent.
Okay, moving on to public hearings, Mr. City Administrator, you wish to do item number seven first?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, if we could, I'd like to have Ms. Nevers begin with number seven. Once we begin the item, somewhere toward the middle to the end of it, we'll need to take a break to count ballots. So when we do take that break to count the ballots, what I'd like to do is come back to item number five, once we get to that point. But I'd like to start out with number seven.
Okay, at this time, public hearing is now open.
We will also need Vice Mayor Thompson to recuse himself for this item. Sorry, we're kicking you out. Okay. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. This evening, this is a public hearing regarding the Landscape Lighting Maintenance Assessment District for Zones 1 through 7. On April 7th, the council approved the proposed increase and the change to the maximum, well, excuse me, approved the engineer's report to the proposed increase and change to the maximum assessment for these zones. And the council also approved at that time the mailing of the ballots and the public hearing notice. This evening, we have received ballots back from those seven-zone residents, and we will be opening those ballots and conducting a count. And following the count, we will present those numbers to the council, and we are asking, following the public comment period, for, to close the public hearing and consider approval of the resolution announcing the results of the assessment ballots for these districts. Any questions?
I have none. Is there anyone else who has any questions? Is there any testimony from the public, Madam Clerk? Is there anyone who wishes to comment?
I have not received any written communication. We will check and see if there's anyone in the lobby. There does not seem to be anyone out in the lobby that wants to speak on this item.
Having no public comments, are there any comments from this council? Having none? Are you ready to open the ballots?
All right, Mr. Mayor, with that, can we move from item number seven, why the ballots are tabulated, and come to item number five, and do the public hearing on that, why they tabulate the votes? I will get Ms. Burkstrom.
Okay, while we're waiting for ballots to be counted on item number seven, we're going to carry on with our business with item number five, please, modification to the Combined Home Investment Partnership Community Development Block Grant and Cal Home Home Ownership Mortgage Assistant Program Guidelines and the CDBG Housing Rehabilitation Program Guidelines. Ms. Burkstrom?
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. This is Amy Burkstrom. I'm the manager of the Housing Department. Tonight, we're really just doing a state required public hearing. Whenever we do any changes on any guidelines for community development block grant funds, we're required to do a public hearing. We applied a couple years ago for 2018 home funds for first-time homebuyer, and we just received our standard agreement last week, and we now need to clear general conditions. I'd already cleared most of the conditions, but they came out with a new template for first-time homebuyer guidelines, that they are requiring that we use their template with basic changes to each city council or each city's program requirements. So that's basically what we're doing today, is we're just going to be adopting the CDBG homeownership guidelines. There's no changes in the guidelines other than the formatting and some wording. For the rehabilitation guidelines, the only change that we have there is, we're requesting that we increase the loan amount from $60,000 per unit to $75,000 per unit, but all other changes are, are just formatting.
Is there anyone who has any questions on this item?
At some point, maybe not today, but it'd be great, because it's a great program that we have in our city, just to get an update
Sure.
on applicants and homes and whatnot.
So, like, sold in the last year?
Yeah, yeah. Because like I said, it's a great program.
I can do that.
And anybody who owns knows it's, it's better to live around owners than renters, in my opinion.
Right.
So getting people to own homes is great for the community, so.
I agree.
It's a great program, and thank you for
Thank you.
managing it.
Thank you.
Are there any other comments from the council?
I'd like to make a short comment, that Vice Mayor Thompson's comments are very good. As serving on the loan committee, we get into the detail of many of the loans, and it's really nice to see a trend of new employees to Orville and buying homes here, and many from other jurisdictions. So it's a nice thing to see. We can't get into the detail because of confidentiality, but I've seen many, many loans going to new families coming to town, and it's a very encouraging thing, and a review would be great to let you know, because we, we deal with it on the loan committee, and it's really nice.
I'd like to comment on that, too. I serve on that committee, and I believe that through implementing some, some new policies and that, the foreclosure rate is way down, where we have a, a really high success rate, and, and it's really nice to, to see that. And you, you do excellent work, Ms. Burkstrom. I appreciate being able to work with you. Are there any comments from the public?
You know, I just, oh, I'm sorry.
Councilmember Smith?
And I'm just, again, this program promotes upward mobility, which is a buzzword in today's world, but it provides people opportunity to economically thrive that are in hourly jobs that traditionally in today's market aren't able to buy a home. But in Orville, an hourly wage earner, you know, don't let that, you know, knock you out of the housing market, which is a wonderful program. It's great, that, you know, because that's often the complaint in today's world, right? I'm an hourly wage earner, I could never own a home. Orville, yes, you can. And, and we make that possible, and so I'm very proud of that, as, as a community leader. I think it's wonderful. Thank you, and thank you for managing that. You do a great job.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further comments? Looking for a motion to adopt resolution number 8874 and 8875?
I move that, I, I move that we adopt resolution number 8874 and adopt resolution number 8875.
I'll second that.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Oh.
He's busy.
Mr. Administrator, would you call the role, please?
Councilman Pittman?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilperson Goodson? Councilperson Draper?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Reynolds?
Yes.
The motion passes six yeses, zero noes, one absent.
Okay, moving on to item number six, amend the Orville Municipal Code Section 1716060 by adding subsection C5 Disaster Recovery Temporary Uses and amending the current fee schedule by adding the associated fee.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Yes, this is the, the second reading, but we actually need to do the vote tonight, because it was backwards. We did the, the, just the reading the last time. To adopt ordinance 1845, an ordinance of the City Council of, City of Orville, amending the Municipal Code Section 1716060 by adding a subsection C5 Disaster Recovery Temporary Uses, and amend the current fee schedule by adding the associated $25,000 fee. So I can answer any questions if we have any, or clarify anything you might need.
Are there any questions or comments on this item? Are there any comments from the public?
I do not see anybody approaching the mic, Mr. Mayor.
Having none, we're looking for a motion to adopt ordinance number 1845.
I move that we adopt.
I move that we adopt ordinance number 1845. I'm sorry if I interrupted anyone. My apology.
I'll second.
Councilman Pittman?
Yes.
Councilman Smith?
Yes.
Councilperson Goodson?
Yes.
Councilperson Draper?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Reynolds?
Yes.
This item passes six yeses, zero noes, one absent. Mr. Mayor Bean, that we're going to need more time to tabulate the votes, I'd like to now move to number eight of regular business.
Okay, keep in mind that we're still, a public hearing
Yes, we still.
is still open, but we're going to conduct some regular business at this time. Moving on to regular business, item number eight, municipal auditorium improvements update. Who's speaking on this item?
It'll be Ms. Nevers. She will get there in just a moment.
Good evening, again. Sorry for that. So just to provide you an update on where we are with the improvements at the municipal auditorium. Following the arson fire to the west side of the building, we had the insurance company bring in their contractor. They have made the repairs to the stage, the exterior of the building. They have added new gates to the basement of the building. And we will also be replacing the stage curtains within the stage of the auditorium. They've also begun repainting of the interior of the auditorium. So with that, we have chosen to expand the interior and exterior of the paint, and we've requested a proposal from the company who is currently painting the auditorium. And this was previously approved by council on May 7th of last year to complete the interior paint of the auditorium. So this evening, we're asking for the proposal to be approved for that paint. Also, we have discovered, following the repairs of the arson damage, that the roof has suffered leaks over the years, and it is in complete disrepair and needs to be replaced. So we have also received a quote for an emergency replacement of that roof, so that we can secure that building and maintain the interior following all these beautiful repairs that we're making. So with that, this evening, we're requesting approval for $70,227 for the interior and exterior paint, and also, we're requesting approval of $333,000 for the replacement of the roof. Soon, we will also be returning with an RFP to repair and provide accessibility upgrades to the restrooms. So these repairs were approved previously, again, May 7th of 2019, but now we are going to be upgrading them to accessibility standards today. So that's going to be a part of that RFP coming out as well. So we will come back at a later date with that information.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments on this item? Do we have any public questions or comments?
I do not see anybody approaching the mic, Mr. Mayor.
Having none, we are looking for a motion to authorize staff to execute the agreements with Belfour Property Restoration and Buick Roofing Company.
I'll make that motion, accepting those recommendations.
I'll second.
Mr. Administrator?
Councilperson Pittman?
Yes.
Councilperson Smith?
Yes.
Councilperson Goodson?
Yes.
Councilperson Draper?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Thompson?
Yes.
Mayor Reynolds?
Yes.
This item passes six yeses, zero noes, and one absent.
Okay, we're still waiting for the count of the ballots for item number seven.
If you'd like, Mr. Mayor, we could move on to reports, discussions, and correspondence.
Okay, uh, well. Does anyone from the council have any announcements or reports?
I have one.
Councilmember Smith?
North Valley Community, a foundation, instrumental in North Valley Community, a foundation instrumental in, uh, of course, helping folks with the Paradise Recovery, uh, has secured a grant and that grant will provide, through all of the local Chamber of Commerce's, Chico, uh, Orville, Biggs, Paradise, to, uh, any business. Um, you're a merchant here locally and, uh, you want to provide mask to your customers. Uh, this is all in the interest of keeping the curve flattened. And, uh, so you're, you're a local business here in Orville and you would, and you, the only qualifier is that you, uh, as a business operator, that masks are, uh, a part of how you conduct business. In other words, a customer comes to your establishment, you have a signage out there that says that, you know, uh, you must wear a mask. If that's you, uh, free of charge, uh, we will provide you mask. And again, the whole idea is to just keep doing, you know, the good stuff, keep, and so that we continue to mitigate the impacts of COVID-19 on our community. And, uh, so, and, and that service, there's a date, uh, that, uh, all of the, um, participants are going to have, and that date is June 26th from 1:00 to 4:00 o'clock. So you're a local business here in Orville. You want to provide your customers, not your employees, your customers, free mask. You can come to the local Chamber of Commerce and, uh, and get those free of charge. And, uh, if you need more, uh, they can provide you more.
Does any other council members wish to announce anything?
Or report anything? I do.
Councilmember Pittman?
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity to, to discuss an item that, um, yeah, it's, it's, uh, well, the Butte District Attorney announced today after the court proceedings, the, uh, justice has finally come to the campfire, uh, fatalities and survivors. Uh, pretty record-setting court case to actually have a company, uh, be at fault for the lives lost and the properties. Um, I don't believe there's any other court cases ever appeared against a company. So, uh, congratulations to the Butte District Attorney's Office, their staff and all the folks that helped them with the investigation and that process. Um, what, 17 months later? It was a huge effort in court, so I want to express that, um, success to them for such a diligent effort. The second item that I wanted to make a, mention about is the, uh, there's the, the President issued an executive order on safe policing for safe communities. And I have a copy of it. I shared it with the police chief and it's interesting that some of the items that are recommended steps to be taken with your local law enforcement, uh, Orville's already done, like, uh, meeting with mental health and serving mental health with, uh, officers in the field. And I say, take that up with, uh, uh, great recognition for our department to actually be a step ahead of the game. Uh, but also, I think the recommendations are to have further training and further items. So I certainly would, uh, suggest that whatever training, uh, the chief can come up with, I certainly would say this council should support and just be a good thing to see, move forward with.
Thank you. Did you wish to comment on the fireworks?
Yeah, I was gonna say.
Yeah, I was gonna.
I'll let you do that. Go ahead.
Well, I'd like to congratulate, uh, Rotary for taking the lead on this once again and, and this whole community for rallying together. And, uh, what, what, what was our projected goal, 15,000?
15 was needed to make the contract.
And we're well over 20 now?
Correct.
Yes, so going to be a very nice fireworks show on 4th of July and, and I believe that this is the only, uh, venue in the state that is going to have 10-inch diameter
That's what we're told.
Yes. Oh, yeah.
Big guys.
Uh-huh. So congratulations, and I, I know that you are instrumental.
I'm just a council member, so.
Yes, sir, you are, but you, uh, you are a diligent one, I'll tell you. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else who wishes to comment on anything? Okay, is there anyone who has any future agenda items? Um, administration reports? Mr. City Administrator?
I have none.
Having none, Mr. Lando?
While he's coming up, I do have, I have one thing that, uh, and that is the, the restrooms at, uh, Bedrock Park. Um, put to potentially put that on for discussion as to a direction, uh, from the council. I mean, I know Bill has some ideas about what he thinks, but I think that, I think that we, maybe sooner than later, um, should have that conversation.
Right now, what we're doing with that is it is out to, uh, a contractor to get us some ideas of numbers of what it was gonna cost to rebuild that. So when we do get all of that together, that will be coming back to the council to give some final direction as to what they would like to see done with that, uh, burnt-out shell. It has been cleaned up, it is fenced off, um, but we are getting you some numbers and concepts together on that right now.
Okay, fair enough.
Mr. Lando?
First of all, thank you for your earlier action. I very much appreciate it. I just wanted to pass on that, uh, met with, uh, Dan Blair and Shannon Ding of PG&E. And besides their, uh, felony conviction, I don't know what that actually means for a corporation. They have come out of, uh, Chapter 11, that, that's been approved. Um, they are trying to harden their, their lines. Uh, they're looking at maybe larger easements, uh, in the future. Uh, they do expect, uh, one to two shut-offs this year, hopefully not to affect the, uh, City of Orville. They're putting in, and I don't understand these terms, but they're putting in microcircuits that hopefully will isolate more areas so that smaller areas will be shut off. Um, I think that's pretty much it. They, uh, they hardened, and again, I'm not sure exactly what it means, 13 miles this last year. They're expecting 92 during 2020. Just information from Dan Blair and Shannon Ding.
Thank you. Leo?
Uh, good evening again. Uh, yeah, I just want to kind of tie in a couple of things that Don and, uh, and you all were, uh, discussing earlier. Uh, first off, with regard, appreciate the, uh, the commitment to our, our, our large assets and the, and that's quite a, quite an expenditure for those, for the municipal auditorium. But, uh, in the future, we are looking to come back to get, uh, to hopefully get your approval on, uh, doing an audit of our la, large, uh, condition audit of our large assets in the city, um, the structures mainly, uh, so we can, uh, look at, hopefully budget these large maintenance projects within our normal budget process and, uh, parse them out in a more controlled fashion, um, so you're not having to, uh, pick up maintenance projects at $400,000 in, in this kind of forum. Additionally, uh, a little bit on, uh, just to give some scale on staff and, and what's going on. Uh, currently, we have eight staff, four of them part-time, who, uh, take care of all the capital improvement and, uh, development in the city. Um, with this year, we're looking at 100-plus single-family dwellings taken from entitlement through, uh, approval and in development, 250 multifamily units, multiple commercial projects, as well as approximately $6 million in capital improvement projects will be coming through. So, um, quite a bit of work, uh, takes a lot of people with a lot of experience to get that done. And everybody's doing a wonderful job teaming up. So I think that, uh, that everybody's, uh, been working really hard to get some things out, so.
Thank you.
I have to jump in.
Mr. Lando?
I insulted Shannon. You know, I'm, I'm lumping these groups together. She's actually Cowwater.
Yeah.
And, and so I, I insulted her, I think, by, uh, talking about that other corporation.
Thank you. Chief, did you have anything to report?
He was, uh, keeping the ballot counting under his watchful eye. I've been watching.
I see, we got security.
This is a very secure situation.
I can see how long I have to talk, so. They got a little ways to go. I've been asked by a few, so for everybody that's, that's here, yes, we had a homicide in the City of Orville. Um, yes, the investigation's ongoing. Uh, we do have a person of interest that we're looking at. We're just not willing to announce who that person is yet. I feel like the department's got a pretty good handle on that. Um, the arson car fire on Pine and Robinson with subsequent missing person. Uh, there's been an arrest made in that. I, we've identified the suspect in the arson. That subject is currently in the Butte County Jail. The investigation into the disappearance of the registered owner is ongoing. I know the Department of Justice is around the corner, processing the crime scene now where that occurred, just looking for additional evidence. So, uh, I've seen that all over social media this evening, so when you see it, that's what it is. It's us working on that case. Um, there are a number of leads in that and we're, and we're running those down. Pop team's been assigned to work the investigation with our detective, so I have no updated stats for the pop team this month. They've been, they've been late nights, early mornings, and then that's, and that's what they're working on. The, uh, remodel at the police department is well underway. Um, it's a mess up there, but, uh, they're, they're making progress. I don't think they're gonna get it done in the 45-day window, but they're still moving right along. Last thing I have is, uh, I had planned a vacation in June that got put on, postponed, and I've pushed it out to a month. Um, I'm hoping to go on vacation if that's, works out and everybody's good with it. I would, it would result in me missing the next council meeting. But we're still up in the air on if the vacation's gonna be go. It's a two-week vacation, so it's all I got.
Thank you, Chief. Mr. Attorney, do you have anything to report?
Nothing to report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Everyone else is busy. So.
If you'd like, Mr. Mayor, we can take a... How long do you think that you're going to need, Ms. Nevers, to complete this?
15 more minutes, just extra, maybe 10.
Would you like to take a 15-minute break?
I would love to. At this time, we're going to take a 15-minute break to allow the, uh, counting of the votes. So. It is now 5:55. We will say 6:10. 10 for you military folks.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely, thank you. Jackie, do we have a July date for our city council?
July 7.
July 7?
There's nothing. First one, I only throw the second one out.
You wanna mention any vacations? I set mine for the, the last two weeks in July. That's why I'm asking. That's a, or, later, but I just... And I know with decima, additional meetings and whatnot, so.
Lecture mic mute, mute all mics.
Come here. 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 Come here.